Well, good evening. We have a bit of an intimate group tonight, so welcome to Bastille University. Welcome to our Council Candidates Forum. My name is Eric Murray. I'm going to be your moderator tonight. I am the president of Cascadia College in Bothell. Cascadia serves the city of Kenmore as well as other cities on the east side, and it's our pleasure to be the host, or my pleasure to be the moderator for tonight. The forum is brought to you by the Greater Bothell Chamber of Commerce. And the Greater Bothell Chamber of Commerce is actually the Chamber of Commerce for both Bothell and Kenmore. And I'm not sure if I'm allowed to say that our name might be changing here as of January 1st to the Bothell-Kenmore Chamber of Commerce, just because we've seen such great development of businesses in the Kenmore community, and we're now able to support both of those communities. So we're looking forward to that transition. We'd like to thank Bastille University for allowing us to use their facilities tonight for this forum. I'm going to be reading a bit from my script, so I don't have to, I don't forget everything that I'm supposed to say tonight. We also want to thank the Chamber for hosting the forum. They'll also do so for the Bothell City Council Candidates as well next month. A lot of care has been taken to develop these questions. The Chamber's been doing this kind of forum for a while now. I've moderated a couple of them, and we take a lot of care to make sure that the questions are balanced, that every candidate has equal amount of time, that candidates get equal amount of opportunities to share their perspectives. So we change up the order, we change up the type of question, but in the long run, at the end of an hour and a half or so, everything will be balanced. So if you feel you didn't get to go first in the first hour, you'll get to go first in the second hour. So just know that we've thought about that. Our purpose tonight is to provide an opportunity for the candidates to introduce themselves, and also for them to express their thoughts on a set of questions. The forum is not a debate. It's not one of those moments when the audience participates by clapping in favor of one platform, one viewpoint, or another. It's an opportunity for us to listen. It's an opportunity for the candidates to be able to express themselves. So what we've asked the audience to do, and it's difficult every time we do this, is to actually refrain from any kind of emotional expression of support or non-support for a candidate's viewpoint. Yeah, something like that's probably not allowed down there. So yeah, we'll keep you under control. Each one can hold a hand. So we appreciate that. I'd like to take a moment to introduce the candidates for the three positions. For position two, the candidates are Suzanne Greathouse, where's there Suzanne, and Joe Marshall. For position four, Nigel Herbig and Patrick O'Brien. And for position six, Carol Baker and Debra Srebnik. Welcome to all of you. Thank you for being here, and we recognize it's a commitment of your time to come out. The evening's being videotaped, and it will be put online, so that those who cannot see it in person tonight will be able to go back and view your responses. So whatever you say will be on YouTube forever, just so you know. So let's get to the format and the rules for our forum. We'll begin the forum with an introductory statement by each candidate that will inform the audience about your history and your connection to the Kenmore community, and why you're running for council. I'll review the points that you need to cover in your opening statement in just a minute. From there, we'll begin the questions, and we'll be rotating through the candidates, so everyone has the opportunity to respond first. And in the first set of questions, you'll each have two minutes. We're going to have some questions that are for all six of you, a general question that each of you will get to answer. There'll be a certain amount of time for those questions. And then there'll be some questions that are position-specific. It doesn't mean that necessarily position four is not interested or has a viewpoint, but we're, in order to get to as many topics as possible and to keep the evening moving, we're going to ask that position two answer a certain question, and then position four answer a certain question, and so forth. We are also going to have a lightning round set of questions. It's fun. It will take about 30 seconds. That's what your yes/no cards are for. We ask that you either say yes, or you say no to those. And like I said, 30 seconds out of our hour and 45 minutes together, so a fun lightning round. We have asked previous to tonight's forum for our community to submit questions, and many of the questions today are from our community, and we've incorporated them. They are the ones that are for the all candidates to respond to. So you'll get a chance to hear from our community what's on their mind and what their interests are. As well, for those people who are in the audience tonight, we have the opportunity, if you'd like, a specific question to be asked. There are cards and a basket out in the foyer, out in the lobby. You're welcome to take a step out, write those questions. About halfway through the event tonight, Brittany, who's the executive director of our Chamber, will go out, get those cards, see if there are any that haven't been asked, and we'll try to incorporate some if we can. We can't guarantee that all questions that are submitted tonight will be asked. We've got a full slate, and like I said, we solicited questions beforehand. You'll then have an opportunity for closing statements. That closing statement is, if you didn't get a chance to answer something that was really important to you, or you feel you have more to say on a certain topic, you can do that. We do have one rule tonight, and that is, you have to abide by the time limit that we give you to answer the questions. The chair of the Chamber Board of Directors is Mike Root. He's sitting here in the front with his trusty yellow paper, which means you have 30 seconds, and his trusted red card, which means time is up. I think you have a timing device as well? All right, we have a timing device also. He's not counting. When that red paper goes up, I am going to graciously and kindly cut you off and say thank you so much, and we're going to move on. So I appreciate your patience and tolerance of that. All right. Candidates, I ask that you enter into the forum as fair-minded as you can. Keep your responses succinct. Focus on the questions. We don't appreciate personal attacks. This is not what this forum is for, to degrade your counterpart in any way. It's to express your viewpoint on the topic. So, everyone's cell phones are turned off? Hold on. Got to check myself. All right. Please set your phones to silent. Candidates, your phones are off? All right, thanks, Joe. Appreciate that. Let's get rolling. So introductions. You have two minutes to introduce yourself. There are three, you can talk about whatever you want in these two minutes, but there are three things that I would love for you to get to during the two minutes. First, how long you've lived in Kenmore. That's important for us to know. How long, or I'm sorry, how have you been involved in the community? What's been your community involvement? And the third is why you're running for council. Those are the three points at least that I'd like you to hit during your two minutes. And so, timekeeper, are you ready?
Ready.
Suzanne, you're going to be up first.
Okay.
And go ahead and grab that mic. Those should be working. And bring it close to you if you want. You and Joe will share. And you can start.
Okay, is this close enough? Do I need to do anything else?
You need to make sure you talk right into it, and you can put it up as close as you want to.
Okay. Can everybody hear me? Yes. Okay, great. Thank you all for coming here. I know it's a little drizzly outside, and it was probably challenging to get into that car and drive over here after you've gotten home from a hard day of work, so I really do appreciate that. So a little bit about me. I started a courtship with Kenmore about 10 years ago, when I met the man I'd eventually marry, Lou, who's in the audience, hiding in the back. And we spent a lot of time at St. Edward's Park, and I found the best drugstore in the world in Ostrom's, and was excited by the location of Kenmore. It's very close to get to Kirkland, where I was living caring for my dad, and to get to work in Bothell. About three years ago, something else happened. I got married to Lou, and about that same time, my daughter was diagnosed with stage four cancer. For the next few years, she did pass away last year. It was a very difficult time for me, and folks in Kenmore really rallied around my family and made, helped us get through that difficult time period. And so I'm running to pay back the debt I owe the community for standing by us and helping us through that difficult time. And it's also to honor my daughter Alex and her memory. She was very, very active in her community, and had a lot of love and support throughout her diagnosis. Since I am new to the community, I bring in a lot of fresh ideas, and I'm ready, willing, and able to use all of my energy to move us forward to the next phase in Kenmore.
Great. You had 12 seconds left. Nicely done. All right. Joe, you're next.
Well, good evening, everybody. I'm Joe Marshall, and my thanks to the Greater Kenmore, I mean, the Greater Bothell Chamber of Commerce for this evening. I'm running for Kenmore City Council, position number two, because Kenmore is my hometown. I went to church right here in this building. I graduated from Inglemore High School. I'm a proud Viking, now coaching my two boys in Inglemore Junior Football. I'm a Husky and graduate of University of Washington Law School. I married my high school sweetheart right here at the Grado at St. Edward's State Park. After law school, I came back and worked for a local firm representing local businesses, local property owners in North Shore, and I had the honor of serving as president of our North Shore Rotary Club during the Great Recession, where we raised scholarships, scholarship money to benefit Woodinville, Inglemore, and Bothell High Schools. I also had the great honor of serving on the Cascadia Community College Foundation Board. I'm running because I want to see Kenmore grow smart and grow with heart. That means that we need to continue with our public safety initiatives for sidewalks, making that a walkable, safe downtown for everybody. We need to protect our parks and our woodlands. We need to enhance our shoreline access. And in terms of transportation issues, we need to go to the public first, see what the public's input is on those issues, and I'd like to see a public pool for the city of Kenmore, so that we can help all kids, as we all grew up with the Bothell Pool, so we can help all kids regardless of income, regardless of their background, learn how to swim, and promote diversity and business stimulation in Kenmore. Let's grow smart and grow with heart. I look forward to working with everybody on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Nigel.
Well, again, thank you for hosting. My name is Nigel Herbig. I'm the incumbent in position four on the Kenmore City Council. My family and I moved here about 10 years ago when we were looking for a place to buy. We lived in Seattle, and frankly, Seattle was unaffordable to us. We had an infant daughter, and we were looking for a good school district, and Kenmore made a lot of sense. At the time, my wife worked in Bellevue. I had worked in Seattle. From a commute standpoint, it made a lot of sense. And since then, Kenmore's really become a home for us. My daughter's now in fifth grade in North Shore School District, and we love everything about this area. When I ran about four years ago, I ran on three main things. I ran on building more sidewalks so that people could walk safely around the town. I ran on a more transparent and open government, and I ran on opening up our waterfront. Since I've been elected, we've built over three miles of new sidewalks throughout the city. We have more than, we have three miles more ready to come online, and in the pipeline right now also. We installed cameras, we installed a camera in City Council Chambers, so that people who can't make it down to a council meeting on a Monday can watch on their phone as they're making dinner, or they can watch afterward and see what we're doing. And we also passed the walkways and waterways ballot measure last year, which is going to greatly enhance our access to our waterfront. Before that, we even expanded out Squire's Landing, which has turned into quite a place for folks who are doing canoeing and kayaking and dragon boating. So I've delivered on my campaign promises from four years ago. I want to continue that work. And I think one question you asked earlier that I meant to get to was how we were involved before. Before I ran for council, I thought it was kind of silly that we had a brand-new city hall, but there was no camera. So I went to council meetings, and I live tweeted the meetings for folks to listen to. And then when I was elected, I led the efforts to get the camera installed, so that everybody can have better access to our government. I hope I can earn your vote again. Thank you.
Thank you, Nigel. Patrick.
Hi, Pat O'Brien here, position four. And I ran against Nigel last time, and I thought there was a need to do that again, because it's all about having a choice, and for somebody to run unopposed, there's no choice. And there is a difference in what I offer, and we'll get to that later. Right now, I'd like to tell you a little bit about myself. I grew up on Finn Hill, went to Thrall Elementary, Finn Hill Junior High, Lake Washington High School, and graduated from Western Washington University with a degree in alternative energy. I've been a board member of Solar Washington, a board member of Hope for Horses, and I have done fundraising since about 1991 as a fundraising auctioneer, and I also have a background in real estate due to my mother being in the real estate business. So that's a little bit of my professional background. What I have to offer the city of Kenmore is, I don't take the path of least resistance. I will try to question staff thoroughly, and when questions aren't being asked, I will make sure that I ask the question, and that some sort of bona fide evidence for what they're stating is true. And I've had concerns about the demolition of the 520 Bridge. That was supposed to occur in Kenmore. I made note to that to the city council. Our city manager notified them that they could not do the demolition in Kenmore, so that saved us a lot of headache, because it's been found out that those demolition materials were contaminated. So I'm always an activist. I'm always here to provide the citizens with information and a different perspective. Thank you.
Thank you. Carol, yeah, you can use that one in front of you.
Am I heard? Can you hear me? Do I need to speak a little bit louder? Well, my name is Carol Baker. I'm running for Kenmore on the city council, because I have a passion to see our city continue to develop with the original vision that we ran on as a community, to become a city that allowed its citizens to participate fully in the future of where they live. I moved to Kenmore in 1988 with my husband and my three children, and I was very delighted to enjoy North Shore schools. It launched them in their careers and in their ability to do the things that I had hoped and dreamed for them. The other thing that I want you to know is I did live in Kenmore when my parents first moved to Washington State. So I started my career in education, if you can call it that, attending Arrowhead Elementary for two years. My dad didn't like commuting into the Lake City area back then, because it was too far away. It wasn't a traffic issue, it was just timing. And so we did move into the city. I feel very grateful to have grown up and watched Seattle bloom as a city and become what it is today, understanding some of the challenges that they faced in the '60s and '70s. So I think paying attention to those issues helped to prepare me. I also want to promote, see the promotion of Kenmore and the vision that our city council has laid down for us. I want to see the city council continue to collaborate with the community. I think they've done a very good job of making the information about the city available to its citizens.
Great. Thank you, Carol. Debra.
Hi, I'm Debra Srebnik, running for position six. And first, I just want to thank you for coming out tonight, and thank you for your enthusiasm in seeing positive changes come to Kenmore. I'm excited about the possibility of representing you on the city council to help make some of those positive changes happen. I've been involved in Kenmore issues for a long time, and people do often ask me, "Why? Why am I running? Why am I involved?" And I really do have a deep commitment to this community and deep connection to the community. I grew up here, went to Arrowhead and Kenmore Junior High and Inglemore, and after, and when I was growing up, my parents always instilled in us that, to do what you can do. And what they meant by that was, if you see a problem and you feel like you have something to contribute to its solution, to not ignore it, to not complain about it, but to go ahead and try and do something about it. So that's what I did when we, when my husband and I came back in the early '90s, and collectively, I think I've lived here probably about 38 years. So at that point, I got involved with the incorporation effort. After incorporation, I served two terms on the Planning Commission, chairing the Parks Subcommittee. A few years later, got involved with developing the Kenmore Waterfront Activity Center, and more recently, the rowing program, based on things that we heard back then, which were why the people really wanted a deeper connection to the water. There's other things that I've been involved in that I can tell you a little bit more about later, but I really want to use some of the skills and experience that I've learned in all of this involvement to work on the issues that are important for you now, safe streets and neighborhoods, parks and waterfront access, and development that benefits all of our residents. As Kenmore grows, I really want to make sure that all of our residents benefit. Thank you.
Appreciate that. We have a little audio reminder, too. I don't know if you can hear the beep-beep-beep when that goes off, so make sure we're really concise on those two minutes. We're now going to move into questions. And position four, Pat and Nigel, you are going to be up first. This is the first question. You'll have two minutes each to answer this question. Nigel, you'll be going first on this round. What can be done to encourage visitors to come to the city of Kenmore?
That is a really good question. That's something that we've been working on with the Chamber and other groups. I think we've actually, a few different things. One, the expanded, whatever we're calling it, the brewery row on the Burke Diamond Trail is something that is, that is just growing by leaps and bounds, and that is getting a lot of, a lot of attention from folks who are essentially wallets on bikes, who are stopping in the city, spending their money here, having a great time, and then going home. So that's been one really great way we've done that. I think the work that we're doing in the downtown core, building out the town square and the hangar building, and kind of giving a real sense of place for Kenmore, because that was something we struggled with since incorporation, was really figuring out where the, kind of where our center was. And I think we've done a good job with that, with city hall, with the town green, with the library, and up and down 181st there. The big thing that's going to bring people in at some point, and this is, you know, kind of knocking on wood, is going to be whether or not Lake Point moves forward or not. Lake Point has potential to bring in people from all over the region with the access to the water that'll be there, with the variety of, I mean, it's a lot of speculation what could be there, but the real estate, possible conference space, parkland, there's a lot of things that could draw people there. And we have to capitalize on what we already have. We have St. Edward's State Park, which is a real jewel, and we need to, we need to protect that, and we need to bring people, you know, get more people coming down here and enjoying it, too, because it is, it is a beautiful thing that I didn't know about until I moved out to Kenmore, and I kind of kicked, I just grew up in North Seattle. So those are just some of the things we can do, and I think we're doing a great job moving forward on many of those.
Thank you, Nigel. Pat.
Wow, what a great question. I think the first thing that we've noticed is, with the Kenmore Village, there's been quite a bit of infill around the core, and it's very difficult to park. So one of the things you might look at is additional parking and the preservation of the areas around, and the promotion of the Swamp Creek Park area. That could be made into kind of a tourist attraction. But to get, to get more people here, we're going to have to have more parking. We don't have a very good retail core. Our retail core was supposed to be at Kenmore Village, and what we see is a lot of density and no real, you know, stores. We have this little strip with the teriyaki store and a few other things. If you want to take karate, great, but that's not bringing people to Kenmore. And we got a vision where that next Kenmore Center core is going to be. And it's not going to be at Lake Point. And it's not going to be at Lake Point, because there's different provisions that limit the building height there, and it's on contaminated ground. It's a brown field that needs to be remediated, so I'm asking for the baseball field, instead of being at St. Edward's Park, to in fact be at Lake Point. And you can cover it, and you can put AstroTurf there, and you can give a reason for people to come and see Kenmore and play baseball at night from boats, whatever they want. The next thing I'd like to see, well, Lake Point Park will be huge, and the next area that's going to be developed is going to be the plywood supply. That is where our core is. It's adjacent across the street from the metro station, and we can incorporate that into our commercial core. I'd like to save St. Ed's, and I think people like it as a passive park. And we need some hotels in Kenmore. People that want to go to Kenmore and fly out in the morning, or going to Bothell and Woodinville to stay for the night, and then at very early times in the morning, they drag down to Kenmore and fly out to the San Juans. Thank you.
Appreciate your passion. We're now going to move to position six. Carol and Debra. Carol, you'll get to go first on this question. And we've heard the name already tonight, so this should be no surprise. What is your vision for the Lake Point development?
Well, that is a wonderful question. It's actually one of the reasons I moved to Kenmore. Told my kids that there would be this wonderful development. They tease me a little bit, because we have lived here almost 30 years, and so far, it hasn't been developed. But my vision for Lake Point is that it would become the jewel of the lake, around the lake, of access point for both our residents and the surrounding community. I do believe that there can be waterfront access for the public and enjoyment for the retail and residential buildings and places that people can live and work. I do believe that there's quite a challenge in developing that property. But one thing that I know about Kenmore is that we have a collaborative city government, and we also have a surrounding business environment that is also viewing Lake Point as an opportunity that could become the gem of Lake Washington. And so my vision is that it would serve multi-purposes, residential, a place of commerce, but also a place of recreation. I think our most wonderful asset that Kenmore has is our access to Lake Washington. And I would really like to see as much of that perimeter retained for public enjoyment, a walking loop, water access, perhaps a passenger ferry, and obviously, places for people to gather and enjoy each other.
Thank you. Debra, your vision for Lake Point?
Thank you. I actually think the decisions around Lake Point are going to be some of the most important that the city council makes over the next four years. The Lake Point property is 49 acres. It's the largest undeveloped tract of land on Lake Washington at this point. And we have the opportunity to, as Carol said, make it a real gem. And in order to do that, we really need to balance a lot of competing interests. The developer will want certain things. They will want increased height allowances. There will be trade-offs. We want to make sure that what happens there works for our residents, works for our businesses, and not just for the people who live in the development. The development is slated to be a mixed use, so the things that I want to make sure happen as that development occurs, and we certainly hope that it will, are the kind of restaurants and retail and public waterfront access that are really going to make it beneficial for everybody. So those are the kind of things that I would focus on. I do feel like it does, the property presents some challenges. It's a large investment for the developer as well, so I think the interests of a range of stakeholders are going to be, need to be taken into account.
Thank you, Debra. We're now to position two, Suzanne and Joe. Suzanne, you'll go first on this question. The Kenmore community continues to evolve. It's growing. There's a lot of development occurring. And when that happens, oftentimes, its environment will change. And so we're interested to know what your priorities are for preservation when it comes to things like green spaces, unique housing, natural resources, historic buildings. As the community grows and develops, what do you hope to prioritize to preserve?
When I have been outdoor belling, many of the folks that I've spoken with have said that what drew them to Kenmore was the parks and the green space, as well as the schools. So that's definitely a priority, is keeping the green spaces and the parks intact. I also think it's important to protect historical buildings, such as the seminary at St. Edward's. And I think that by putting the lodge in that space will save a building that was going to just be fenced in and let deteriorate. So I'm all for saving, increasing the parks and the waterways, and we do have a lot of challenges with the way we're building out the different neighborhoods. the different neighborhoods. Often, there are problems with traffic, and we need to find some creative means to deal with the traffic issues. And we've got other areas in the community that are underdeveloped, and we've got folks who are underserved in terms of affordable housing. So we're going to have to balance all of those things together in order to move forward.
Thank you. Joe?
I think I'd like to focus on preserving what was my original passion, and that was our historic buildings, including the seminary. I am the person who suggested to Ann Hurst that the property, St. Edward's Seminary, be proposed for the National Preservation Board. That's because of, everybody recognizes the value of not just the building, but the rustic nature of the campus. And that preservation, I think, is now, at least that the Daniels Project is going in, becomes a win-win for the public because of that move to preserve not only the building, but the nature of the campus in general. You recall that the original deal for Mr. Daniels was that he was going to own the property in exchange for the nine acres of park, and he did not mention anything about dedicating space in the building for nonprofit community use. Well, the citizens of Kenmore got together and spoke up, and thanks to Jerry Paulet and Jessen Farrell, Washington state law was changed for Kenmore, so that Kenmore got a better deal and got space dedicated in the building for nonprofit community purposes. And not only that, but public ownership was absolutely maintained through a long-term lease. So it's that type of approach, I think, that we will have when we get success for both developers who are looking at different projects, and that type of success in doing things for the entire community of Kenmore that benefit everyone, in addition to our green spaces, with a focus and emphasis on our neighborhood parks and preserving the environment and the natural spaces in those parks.
Thank you, Joe. Thank you, candidates. That was the first round of position-specific questions. We're now into round two of position-specific questions. Kenmore is becoming more and more known for its recreational opportunities, so all of these questions, the three different questions we'll ask you, in some way relate to some of the recreation or opportunities for enjoying the community. So we're going to start with position six. Debra, you'll get to go first this time, and then Carol. So the first question is, from your perspective, what are the next steps for Kenmore in providing more parks and more walkways? What are the next steps?
More parks and more?
Walkways.
Walkways. That's a great question. I think we're already taking some steps that will be going into the future, and passage of the waterways and walkways bond measure in the fall is a big step in that direction. I co-led that effort, and I'm thrilled that we'll be getting bike lanes and sidewalks on our major arterials and improvements to our existing parks. I am very much in favor of making sure that if there are open space opportunities, that the city consider acquiring them, if that makes sense. They did so. The Squire's Landing property is a perfect example. A few years ago, purchasing that, it was an adjacent property to an existing park, and it allowed us to develop the Kenmore Waterfront Activity Center, which is now sponsoring stand-up paddleboarding, dragonboating, our crew program that I launched, helped launch, and that has also helped spawn the rowing program at Inglemore that started this year. So I think, you know, that type of partnership between the city identifying a piece of property and a nonprofit helping to manage the recreational opportunities within that can be a really great model. We've had a lot of activity based on that partnership.
Thank you. Carol?
Well, I do commend the citizens of Kenmore for looking at the opportunity of passing the walkways and waterways bond measure. That was passed by the citizens 62%, which was really a good thing. It was a long-term investment in things that are necessary for the safety of our citizens, and also to enhance the parks going forward. One of the things that I think people appreciate about Kenmore is accessibility. And that comes in a lot of different forms, not just the waterways, but we also have this wonderful bike trail through our city. I think Kenmore's done a great job of partnering with organizations like Cascade Bikes to take an inventory of how well that is used. We have lots of people who walk that walkway, and I would like to see the ability to walk through our city expanded, because that is one of the ways that people enjoy the outdoors. An example of that, that the city moved forward with, was to pave the toll pipe pipeline, so that that made a little bit easier access through some kind of muddy, undeveloped, and, you know, blackberry-covered areas. So I really appreciate that the city has moved forward in the places that they can. I do believe that citizen involvement and public meetings that would allow the citizens of Kenmore to help to dream big and to collaborate on what those different areas look like would be essential. And regionally, we will be serving people and attracting people to our community through our recreational assets.
All right. Thank you, Carol. We're going to move to position two. Suzanne and Joe. Joe, you'll get to go first on this one. How can our community best provide for sports fields in Kenmore?
Number one, I think that we need to look at the resources we already have, and it's a great question, because of course, my son Quinn has played the last three years baseball. I see some of our baseball folks in the room right here today and had a great time. I grew up playing baseball, at least for a couple seasons, on the grass field at St. Edward's, and had a great time there. That's the one towards the east. We didn't play out towards the west, though there are backstops there. But I think we've got to revitalize the, one of the main interests we had back then in the '70s, which was that the schools, Arrowhead, Shelton View, Morelands, Kenmore Junior High, Inglemore, they all had ball fields. And we played on those fields as kids in Little League. We even played downtown. There was a vacant lot right downtown, about where the Safeway, or behind the Safeway now. Rapidly developed, that's gone. The schools are still here. We have got to pursue an interaction with the school district to see what can be done to get more resources for our kids and more options for them. In terms of St. Edward's, I believe that we need to look at what sort of impact, number one, what we can do with these schools and what we can pursue there. But secondly, I am, since I played there on grass as a kid, I have no problem with a grass field being looked at, as long as it's in full compliance with preservation of the precious wetlands right there, and the rest of the environment in terms of any lighting. I don't believe there should be lighting, but I believe it should be a grass field. It'd be absolutely fabulous. I'm interested in the city's cork sand option.
Thanks, Joe. Suzanne, how can our community best provide for sports fields in Kenmore?
So another thing I noticed, outdoor belling, was the number of new young families in town. So I think that we're going to continue to have a need for sports fields above and beyond the discussion of St. Edward's ball fields. I think that we need to look at a number of options. Joe mentioned the schools. Often, the schools are booked up afterwards for practices for the school and in the evening for games, so I think we shouldn't discount that. But I think we should look at other options, other properties we can buy, and I think we should move forward with developing the ball fields at St. Edward's. That's been underway for a long time. A lot of work has been done on that, a lot of studies. We've got a lot of help paying for that. It would be cheaper than us going out and acquiring other property. So I think we've got a long way to go in terms of providing places for our kids to play ball.
Okay. Thank you. We'll move to position four. Nigel and Pat. Pat, you'll go first this time. Kenmore's got great access to Lake Washington. We know that. How could we maximize waterfront access and identify areas for potential revenue?
All right. As I stated before, there is a longstanding court case, Washington State versus Pioneer Towing. And in that court case, that property, where Lake Point is, was deemed very polluted, and there was mandatory testing on 13 wells. That testing did not take place. And I've always demanded that testing take place. Department of Ecology said, you can't, we don't have the money to test, but in the court decree, it stipulates that Pioneer Towing was to pay for the testing. So I think anybody that wants to send anybody to the near shore for activities in the water or not should be aware of real testing that's shared with the public and done at the 13 wells, if not more. So let's just start with a baseline of what is really there. Because at one point, you could fish and eat the fish at Logg Boom Park, and then there were signs saying, "Don't eat the fish," and now it's back to eat the fish. And from what I know and what I've read from the Department of Ecology files, the Army Corps of Engineers did a study and found dioxin levels off of Logg Boom Park the same, if not greater than, the lower Duwamish. Okay, the city did a test, and they said, "We didn't find anything." But the city tested to four inches, and Army Corps tested to four feet. So I think that a basis of information comes first, and then you come up with a community plan to mitigate and remediate the site. And that's why I think it's great to have the baseball fields down there, because you can cover them up and put astroturf or whatever you want to have, four fields, have six fields, I don't care. But you can't remediate a site once you've spent a billion dollars on buildings, but you can remediate a site if it's got baseball fields on it.
Okay. Thank you. Nigel, how can we maximize waterfront access and identify areas for potential revenue sources?
Lake Point is something that people have been dreaming about since before the city was incorporated, and rightfully so. It is, as Debra said, the last kind of undeveloped piece of land on Lake Washington. And it has so much potential to kind of bring new life to the city. And not only that, but it also has the potential to bring quite a bit of waterfront access to the city also. We're talking about a path around there. We're talking about little pocket beaches. You're talking about places where you can launch canoes and kayaks. We've already seen what just our little, our small investment along the Spanish River at Squire's Landing has done to really get people back in the water. What we're looking at at Lake Point could be bigger than that, I think. You could have our crew teams based out of there. Inglemore Crew could be based out of there. The revenue side of that, and this is all subject, you know, all of this is so far off and speculative, but when you're talking about a billion dollars' worth of development, and you're talking about the potential for new retail and new office space, the potential revenues out of there could be very significant. And again, though, we, there's a lot of numbers that need to be crunched on this, and the plan isn't nailed down yet. And there's a lot of work we have to do to make sure that it all pencils out in the end, but the potential is there. And I think we need to start working and keep working towards a positive outcome at Lake Point.
Okay. Thank you, candidates. We're going to switch gears now from position-specific questions to a question that was submitted by the community online. And everyone will have an opportunity to answer this question, but this time, you have one minute. So our timekeeper will put the yellow card up halfway through your answer. Just make sure you note that it's a little bit less time. We are going to go right down the line with Suzanne. You're starting first. Earlier this year, the Washington State Parks Commission unanimously approved the proposal to renovate the St. Edward's Seminary building. Did you support or oppose the proposal, and why?
So I kind of touched on that earlier. I supported it, and I think it's a great opportunity for the city. I think it will bring a lot of people in as kind of an anchor business. We'll have a hotel, a spa, restaurant, and the Daniels folks are going to retain the historic nature. So I think that's the best option, and I'm definitely for it.
Joe?
I opposed it because I believe that public property should remain nonprofit and publicly owned. But as we've seen, what happened was, we got a more positive outcome when we stood up and spoke out for Kenmore. The developer did not come in offering dedicated nonprofit space in the building, and we got it after our activism, in addition to the nine acres on the north side of the park, and a long-term lease and continued public ownership of a public asset.
I always viewed the seminary as kind of a psychic center to the park. The idea of that park without that building felt fundamentally wrong to me. And while there were a lot of places where things could have gone in a bad direction with development in that building, I think the deal that we ended up with and that the state agreed to, as Joe said, it preserves the nature of the building. It opens up access to the building in a way that people haven't had access to in years. It keeps the building standing. It brings more people into the park. So yes, I was in favor of it, and I'm looking forward to seeing how everything works out, and I'm looking forward to actually getting in the building again.
Pat?
The main purpose for state and national parks is public use. The public is defined as everybody. This place is going to be built exclusively for rich people. The rooms are $450 to $700 bucks a night. Don't kid yourself. There's going to be parking problems. It is not going to continue the theme of a passive park. So I was against it. And I went to St. John Vianney for years, and I think it's great to have an old building, but I think it's very wrong. And I saw the state gerrymander this. It was supposed to be unanimous vote. It was not. They changed the rules so it didn't have to be a unanimous vote to change it from its park, state park use to a private use. And so I was against that, for sure.
Carol?
Thank you. You're such a gentleman.
I am totally in favor of this project for a number of reasons, but mainly, it's
because the state was very honest about its inability to bring the greatest use to this gem of a park that is in an urban setting to fruition. And as they looked at their state budget and their own resources, they did not have the ability to make that park useful to the public. And I think this is, the private-public partnership that they created is innovative. It allows for state oversight, but it will give better public use of that land than it presently is. So it is a step forward.
And Debra?
Thanks. I was one of the earliest members of the Friends of St. Edward State Park, and that group was formed to actually originally oppose the McMenamins' development so long ago. I didn't feel like that development was in scale or in scope or fitting with the park setting, the family-oriented setting. But I do, I did support, and I do support, the Daniels development. I feel like the lodge-style, small hotel, modest-style hotel, designed by someone with considerable expertise in rehabilitating historic buildings, really does fit, and it will provide the kind of public access to that great building that we've wanted for a long time.
All right. Thank you all for your perspectives on that. We now switch to what I think is the most enjoyable part of the evening, and that's the flash round. So each of you has a yes/no card up there. I'm going to ask you to hold up one of those signs based on the questions. I think there are nine or 10 of them here, that I'm going to ask you. Everybody ready?
Yeah.
Okay. Do we need to practice? My name is Eric. Most of you are listening. Okay, great. Here we go. Is the city of Kenmore financially healthy? Thank you. There was one no there. Should the city of Kenmore provide more sidewalks? Unanimous. Should there be sports fields at St. Edward Park? Unanimous. Do you sup- Do you support 1% for the arts? Are you planning on enjoying the new hot rocks this fall at the hangar building? Do you know what the hot rocks are at the hangar building?
Yes, I already said them.
All right. Should the city of Kenmore provide additional traffic calming measures in neighborhoods? Thank you. Is there an opioid epidemic in Kenmore? Thank you. Do you support the idea of a Kenmore passenger-only ferry? Come on, Joe. All right, thank you. Will the Seahawks make it to the Super Bowl?
Oh, yes!
Lots of optimism on the board tonight. Okay, that was our flash round. They gave me 10 minutes for that, but it really did flash by, didn't it? Those are all of those questions. Thank you for that, appreciate it. That means we'll probably have time to insert another audience question here. All right, so we're going to go back now to the all-panel questions. These are not position-specific. Again, you have one minute to answer this question. We're going to go in reverse order this time. Deborah, you're going to go first. What is your 10-year vision for Kenmore?
I would say my vision has to do with three things. One is increased pedestrian safety on our streets, that's the biggest issue that I've heard, doorbelling, and improvements to our waterfront access, including Lake Point, and development that really has benefits for all of our residents. And again, that could, that relates to both our downtown development as well as the Lake Point development. And what I mean by that are things like retail services and waterfront access that really benefit not just the people who live in the developments, but all of our residents.
Thank you. Carol?
I believe that Kenmore has a bright future. I think our 10, the 10-year vision that I see does include increased public safety. I think our sidewalks are a big part of that, but I think bicycle safety and traffic remediation is also very important to that safety. I believe that the Lake Point development really is one of the keys to creating that gemstone that I keep talking about. I think it's vital for the identity of our city, and I also believe that economic development in our downtown core and along the 522 corridor, that includes affordable housing, is also one of the keys to a bright future.
Pat?
All right, I'd like to see, oh, sorry. I'd like to see Lake Point tested and then come up with a viable plan for the city on Lake Point. I think that's a core. I'd like to see the city work with the owners of Plywood Supply and all the people on Brewery Row there and provide more parking for transit. I think we need a tunnel underneath 522 connecting two transits going east and west. And if you had, well, where the metro parking is right now, it's full. So if you had more parking on the other side and you had some shopping ability to draw people there, I think that'd be really a plus. And I'd like to tie in the grocery outlet in that area somehow by a trail or some other means, so Kenmore residents could walk or bicycle to other things within the city.
Nigel?
The last four years, we've built over three miles of sidewalk. I'd like to see us continue that sort of track record for the next 10 years, because we all know that we have, we have a long ways to go before we make Kenmore into a truly walkable area. So I'd like to continue that work. I want to make sure that Lake Point continues moving forward. We have the potential to have maybe the first phase finished up within the next 10 years or at least well underway. Want to make sure that's done in a way that is sensitive to the community but is also delivering what we're going to want to see long-term for the city. I want to make sure the walkways and waterways are delivered on time and on budget. I want to make sure that we're partnering really well with Sound Transit 3 as they bring in the bus rapid transit through the 522 corridor, and that the park and ride they're putting in is put in a place that makes sense and builds off the rest of our community. And actually, one more project I'd like to see, we didn't have a walkways and waterways, but we talked about, was a potential trail going over Swamp Creek from 73rd to 80th as an extension of the toll trail that we just built. I'd love to see us move on that later.
Thank you. Joe?
We've got to grow smart and grow with heart. And like everybody has said thus far, we've got to continue with public safety and the sidewalks, make this a walkable, safe city in front of the most heavily populated areas. We've got to have a vibrant downtown with a great restaurant, which we hear is coming. Great things that the city has done and the council has done in the past have to continue, like the skateboard park that benefit kids from all backgrounds. We have not only an increasing economic vitality in Kenmore, we have an increasing middle-income and low-income population in this city, and it's time that we continue our efforts to help everybody in Kenmore. That includes a public pool for Kenmore. We grew up with it, we're privileged enough to have it, Bothell Pool, we're privileged enough to have it right here at Carol Ann Wald. We need to look at options, maybe one Bothell, maybe here with the Daniels development, maybe downtown. We need to look at options for a public pool so that all our citizens can benefit, and projects like Mary's Place.
Suzanne?
I agree with a lot of the other changes that folks have been identifying. The town is on a really great trajectory right now. You can see the downtown is being developed. We're doing a lot right now in our parks, you can see evidence of that. I'd like to see us continue the development of the downtown corridor, and we're seeing that there are provisions for that, permits that are being done to encourage affordable housing and more density down that corridor, which will be helped by the bus routes and sound transit. And the Lake Point project also will bring a lot of income and folks to the community as well as the lodge, so I would say continue on the positive trajectory we're already on.
Thank you. We're going to start the next round of all candidate questions. We're going to start in the middle. Nigel, you'll go first, and then we'll head down the row that way. We've been looking forward. Now we're going to look backwards for a moment. What's been your most favorite change that's happened in the city of Kenmore in the last five years?
That's a really interesting question. There's been a lot of change in the last five years. I, I'm going to stick with, stick with what I ran on. I'm really, really happy with the, with the three miles of sidewalks we've installed over the last three years and the fact that we passed walkways and waterways, which is going to build sidewalk all along Juanita and up to our northern border on 68th. I think people's ability to walk through their community is one of the most basic sort of human rights. No, you shouldn't be forced to get into a car to move around your community, and we have made great strides in that direction in the last four years. And we still have a long ways to go, but we're, that's still our top council priority. It's something we're working on every single day, and I want to see us continue that.
Pat?
I was very happy that we put pressure on Kiwi General Manson to have them remove the demolition equipment from the Lake Point site, because there could be no development until that was accomplished. And it took Jerry Polet and a lot of people put pressure to have that done. So at what, we were supposed to get the best of the West, and that disappeared. That was all demolition work that did not get done in Kenmore, thank goodness. And then the other thing I'm hopeful for is more attention's being paid to the asphalt and concrete plant. I think that's the black eye in Seattle. If you're going to have bicyclists and everybody enjoying the trails and whatnot, and we still have that, it's still untested, unmonitored, and there's no filtration by law, then you have to deal with that problem, or you're going to continue to say, "Oh, what's that thing, Belgian smoke over there?" We got to address that, and we have made steps that way.
Just to remind the candidates, this is your favorite change from the last five years. There'll be, the next question is to look forward to what your top three priorities are for the coming year. So we're looking backwards right now.
Looking backwards, I think one of the changes that has been one of my favorite changes was the city council's search and discovery for Rob Carlinsey. I think that's a very key position for our city to be able to move forward. I think that what he brought was a collaborative spirit, not just to the function of the city but to the, this idea of bringing everybody that lives here into a place where they can say why they love Kenmore. But why I love Kenmore is that our little Kenmore Village is a gathering place to know your neighbors and to visit. And I have grandchildren, so I've gone down many times to let them run through the fountain, had the opportunity to have coffee and meet with people. I love that there is an expanded urgent care available to our community in the heart of our city, and I love that there's a new restaurant coming.
Deborah?
I think the, the thing that I liked the most over the last five years is really seeing the visible improvements led by the city. And I'll just give three quick examples, and it just seems to be getting better and better. The first was, as I mentioned before, the purchase of the Squire's Landing property, which really allowed us to develop the Kenmore Waterfront Activity Center. The second was the background, all the background work on the waterways and walkways bond measure that was so successful in the fall. I'm so proud to be a part of that. And then more recently, the opening of the hangar building in the town green. To me, that's icing on the cake. It's been in the work for 20 years, and it's terribly exciting to me.
Thank you, Deborah. Suzanne?
I agree with the ladies at the end with about the town square as a community meeting place. It's, it's been pretty amazing to me, because the first day going into it, if any of you have been there, it's a pretty wide-open building. And I was there with my brother the other day, and he was saying, "This reminds me of Field of Dreams. If they build it, if we build it, they will come." And that's been my experience going down there, is every time I go, there are more and more people enjoying the space. And in general, the whole notion of fun and having fun in Kenmore is something that I feel is really exciting.
And Joe?
My favorite change was seeing a place so closely connected to my spiritual upbringing, maintaining that sense of giving to the poor, to those in our community who are not enjoying the wealth, the boom times, and the money that many of us are blessed to have. To see that change in Washington State law so that the St. Edward Seminary is dedicated a certain amount of space for the nonprofit in our community, to benefit everybody in our community, which we have everybody, no matter who's going to be on this council. We all agree, and it was lovely to see everybody, at least at some point, come together on that, and we've got to continue helping everybody in our community.
Thank you. Now we're going to go back to forward thinking. Pat, you're going to start this round, and then we're going to come back this way. And I want to give you just a minute to compose your thoughts instead of having to go right off the cuff. All of you get a little bit of time to think about this, but I'm going to ask you to name the three most important issues for the city of Kenmore to address. And in order to be fair for Pat, I'm just going to give a minute for him to put his thoughts together before we start that round.
Thank you.
Three most important issues for the city of Kenmore to address. All right. You ready, timekeeper?
All right. I think the, the most basic need for everyone is to have infrastructure. What we've seen is added density, and we know what that brings. It brings demand for parking and services. And I want to make sure that the city is prepared for any, any infrastructure needs that come about, and I want to work on reasonable development, and I want to see the city also have a testing program that they work with the public on for the waterfront. And I think it's better to test and then decide what to do rather than just cover it up and say, "It's all good, go ahead." So I'm very much interested in the science that we need to apply and the reporting we need to apply to come up with viable ways to use our waterfront. I think that's key. Thank you.
I'm going to sound kind of like a broken record, but I want to continue our work building sidewalks so people can get around our community safely. I want to also make sure that we, you know, the voters of Kenmore put in a lot of trust into the council when they passed the walkways and waterways ballot measure last year, and we have a lot of work to do over the next few years to make sure we shepherd those through on time and on budget and that we're delivering what we promised. So a lot of focus needs to be spent on that, because if we don't do this right, then we'll lose the faith of the voters, and we don't need that. And also, with sound transit coming through with the bus rapid transit, there's going to be a lot of work to do with sound transit with other municipalities along 522 to make sure that the BRT that's set up to come through our community works for our community, that the stop they pick makes sense, that the, that the parking garage that they're going to build makes sense where it's located, and that it interacts with the community in a, in a way that is helpful and not harmful. So I think that's something I want to spend a lot of time on, making sure we get right.
Joe?
The three most important issues are growing smart, making sure that we partner and encourage vital economic development that benefits all citizens of the community, if it's inclusion of waterfront access, park mitigation, other assistance. Secondly, addressing traffic going to the people first, and that, in that I include the pedestrians' safety and building sidewalks, and not only growing smart but growing with heart, helping everybody in our community with projects like, projects like Mary's Place, the family shelter, my hat is off to the council on that, and a public pool for all the kids, all the kids in Kenmore regardless of background and economic background.
Suzanne?
So safety is my, my biggest concern, and that takes the form of traffic, safety, the sidewalks. If we, what, what we've understand now is that there's an opioid epidemic in the high school, and so I'd like us to partner with the community and the schools any way we can to deal with that problem. Within the neighborhoods, we're seeing a lot of infill, and I think that we need to spend more time thinking about the infrastructure there and the traffic and the speeds. And last of all, economic development. I think there's still a lot we can do there, and we've got a good start.
Deborah?
Yeah, I think my three top issues, the first one is making sure we have safe streets in neighborhoods, and that includes, and many of you have already talked about that, the increased availability of sidewalks in many of our areas are very unsafe currently for walking around. Bike lanes, making sure that waterways and walkways, the bike lanes and sidewalks go forward on budget, on time. And that, my second issue is the park and waterfront improvements. Many of those will be in the, in the bond measure as well, making sure that those are also part of the Lake Point development. And lastly, development that has real benefits for all of our residents and that they're tra, and that development is attractive, the traffic is mitigated, and we get the kind of retail restaurants and services and public access that people really want to have. Thanks.
Well, I think one of the things that I find in agreement is the safety issues. I think the city's done a very good job of prioritizing that, and that definitely is something that will be on the top of the list. I believe that the city can partner with business and community leaders to provide the amenities we want and the economic development that we want in the city. I envision the city being able to move forward in attracting, promoting our city as a place that a business would want to participate in. And then the last issue is continued collaboration with our surrounding cities. We are not an island to ourselves, so developing community leaders that have that skill set and go across municipal boundaries, schools too.
Okay, thank you. We have one more all candidate question for you. We're going to go alphabetically by first name this time around, so since you aren't looking at your nameplates like I am, it'll go Carol, Deborah, Joe, Nigel, Pat, and then Suzanne. We know since the tolling of the 520 bridge began, that traffic through Kenmore has become horrendous on the 522. Despite the improvements to 522, despite the Sound Transit 3 being passed, there's still going to continue to be traffic issues within the city of Kenmore. What is the city's and the council's responsibility to promote alternative forms of transportation like walking, biking, and public transportation?
I think the city's responsibility is to promote innovation when their citizens and the people passing through our community think about traffic, so educating the public. I also think that it's the city's responsibility to collaborate with both its residents and its neighbors on how to ease traffic congestion I think including young people in that process is very important, and trying new things, being willing to give up a car in favor of walking or using an alternate type of transportation. So the city can do some things to promote that.
Deborah.
I think threefold. One, in terms of alternative transportation, supporting things like waterways and walkways that provides the bike lanes and sidewalks, that's one. Making sure that we do have density close to transit, which is the direction the city is taking right now, continuing that effort. And then I think the other way is really the way that the city approached lobbying Sound Transit, which was partnering with our neighboring cities. The Bus Rapid Transit was not on the radar for Sound Transit III. And by partnering with our other cities and collectively lobbying, we were able to provide enough information to get that issue on their bond measure.
Joe.
I think I echo what Deborah said, and especially emphasize advocacy and joining with the other cities, but certainly standing up for Kenmore and advocating to the county as to the impact this has in traffic and increased population and increased development has on our community, and getting innovative transportation solutions, being there with advocacy and standing up for Kenmore.
Nigel.
I believe I was one of the council members that brought to staff the idea that we really needed to get plugged into Sound Transit III as they were developing that project list. And as Deborah said, we fought really hard, and we worked with Bothell, Woodinville, and Shoreline and Lake Forest Park, and we got in a project that I think is going to give people a lot of extra mobility through the city and get people to link light rail heading up to Everett or south to downtown, or heading over to 405 BRT to get down to Bellevue in a very predictable and quick manner. And I think that's a huge step in the right direction. I'm going to go back to it, sidewalk, sidewalk, sidewalks. We still need to continue to make sure that people can walk to those places, to walk toward downtown, to walk to Bus Rapid Transit, instead of forcing folks in their cars, because that's what leads to a lot of the backup that we're dealing with. I'm going to say something a little controversial right now. We're never going to have good traffic through Kenmore. We're never going to have good traffic throughout the region right now unless there's some sort of major downturn, Amazon moves everybody out to New York or something, and Boeing closes down. It's not going to happen, so we need to find other ways around that.
Pat.
All right. And tolling on I-405. That was a real slap in the face when that happened, and those two lanes that are now tolled were paid for by taxpayers. I'd like to at least see one of those open up to general traffic, and I don't believe in the, that as a system is something that we voted on. Off-peak work hours, promote electric bikes on the Burt-Gilman Trail with charging stations, and 405 tolling, like I said, on both lanes. Work with owners like Rite Aid, had no idea they're putting a divider in, and you couldn't access the Rite Aid in Wells Fargo. There is an opportunity to put in another lane to access the Safeway. I think we need to work with the road owners. Road tests wanting to drive before you go and put a hotel on it. And Lake Point got an F+ when they did the road study under the Olsons, so do another road study before you put 5,000 people on Lake Point.
And Suzanne, you get to wrap up this round.
Okay. So we're already doing a number of positive things in the city with the density down the transit route, so that's one of the things I think is really important. I agree also with the walkways and providing a way for folks to access the downtown without taking their car. One of the things I recently found out the city is doing that I was pretty excited about is they're looking at technology to help manage traffic flow, which I think is another big issue we have that exacerbates the situation with traffic. So continuing to look at innovative ways of moving forward.
Thank you. We are going to move back to our first format, so position-specific questions. We've got one more round of that to come. We're going to start with position two. Joe, you're going to go first this time. What can the city of Kenmore do to encourage the development in some of its older buildings, should this include any adjustment to traffic impact fees? And you'll have two minutes for this one.
I think traffic impact fees always need to be looked at when you're talking about new development and anything that's going to increase traffic, obviously. In fact, that's what you've got to have, and I've got experience precisely on that issue regarding traffic impact fees and their applicability. But when we're talking about older buildings, it's the use that would increase the traffic that we've got to be concerned about. So I think that if something is of more historical nature, that it really should be examined how that balances out with the traffic mitigation goal in mind after precisely been studied. So some leeway should be given for if it's a preservation of an historical nature.
Suzanne, let me repeat. What can the city of Kenmore do to encourage development in some of its older buildings, and should this include any adjustment to traffic impact fees?
I think it's probably a case-by-case basis. I think in general, what we've found is that infrastructure needs to be looked at when we're doing any kind of development. So I believe that case-by-case, we should look at those impact fees, and then depending on what kind of use the building's going to have, what kind of modifications are being made, that decisions be made on that basis.
Okay. Thank you. We're going to go to position four. Pat and Nigel. Pat, you'll get to go first on this question. How should the city of Kenmore proactively encourage the development of affordable housing, and might this include any tenant landlord regulations?
All right. Let's look at Mary's Place, which is a great idea. However, if you try to bootstrap low-income housing into an existing building, you've got additional costs to demolition and try to turn that into something that's usable by 50 families. I think we've got another piece of property where we inherited from the Brightwire Project that'd be a much more suitable place for low-income housing. I think the, being adjacent to Swamp Creek and all the herrings nesting there, and the fact that the parking lot is underwater, I don't think that's a great place for it. And I think there's other things, like a nature education center would be a great use of that building. And we can take that idea of low-income housing and move it to a place with a brand-new structure designed specifically to help the people that we're trying to help and not trying to go backwards and recondition a building that's been there for 60 years. So the parking, let's see here, that was the last question. That's it for me on that one.
All right. Thank you. Nigel, I'm going to repeat the question. How should the city of Kenmore proactively encourage the development of affordable housing, and should this include tenant landlord regulations?
Yeah, I'm going to start off by saying yes, in a couple of places. One, I think we have the option in Kenmore to give, to ask landlords, to make landlords give 60 days' notice instead of 30 days' notice if they're bumping up somebody's rent by 10% or more. I frankly don't view that as a very burdensome thing to do to somebody. A landlord should have some general idea when they're going to be raising rent, and 60 days is plenty of notice to give somebody. 30 days, asking somebody to scrape together first and last month's rent if they have to move because of the rent increase, 30 days is just not enough time. It is frankly inhumane. I also, last year, was advocating on the council for us to end source-of-income discrimination, which is what allows currently landlords can say, "Well, I'm not going to take your Section 8 voucher," or, "Well, I'm not going to count your food stamps as part of your income." I think housing, you know, income is income, and landlords should have to treat income as income. I think we have some very good incentives around affordable housing. The multifamily tax incentive is great. I think, though, that we need to redefine what is affordable under the multifamily tax exemption. We move that up to 80% of countywide AMI adjusted median income, and 80% countywide income is pretty much Kenmore median income, so you don't get anything meaningful with that. We need to move that down to something more meaningful. But yes, there you go.
All right. Thank you. Now for position six. Deborah, you'll go first on this question. How should the city of Kenmore address parking management?
Excellent question. A couple different things come to mind. One is when we have development going in, to make sure that the parking ratio is appropriate. We are a suburban area, not an urban area. I believe the ratio for the one-bedrooms that are in the town square at the moment are something on the order of .6 or .8. In other words, .6 or .8 parking stalls per unit. To me, that seems low. That's a bit urban, considering you'd really need a car to get around in this area unless you're going to downtown or the U District. So that's one. The other, and of course, these are related, because what happens when you don't have enough parking in the development is you get parking on the street. So right now, we're having to manage parking that is happening all around the downtown and putting four-hour regulations and things like that. So I think these are interrelated, and we need to do a better job both on the planning and policy side, but also on the enforcement side for, so making sure that people are not parking for weeks on end on our side streets. Thanks.
Thank you.
Well, the parking problem isn't going to go away because the policies that Kenmore has in place really were designed to complement or become compliant with King County's countywide density guidelines, which came through the Growth Management Act. So we're catching up with what has been in place for 20 years. I think Kenmore's done a really good job of complying with the density issues, and they've actually been as generous as they could be with parking in that 522 corridor. I think when we start looking at the continued growth of the city, we could probably do a better job of making sure that private development that has, that does have adequate parking for the residents that live there and not eliminate parking. That's the trend in the city along the 522 corridor that is kind of mandated by King County. But as the city continues to build out, I think that they can do a really good job of accommodating the businesses and the residents that will live on those properties.
All right. Thank you. We have one more all candidate question before we get to closing remarks tonight. We're going to go alphabetical by last name this time. Carol, you coincidentally get to go first again. Suzanne, you'll go second. Nigel, you're ahead of me, you'll go third, then Joe, then Pat, and then Deborah, you'll wrap this up. I know we have some public health folks in the audience. This question will be of interest to them. One minute. Yes, thanks. Regarding safe injection sites. King County recently announced it is going to open two safe injection sites, places where people can inject heroin under medical supervision. The Kenmore City Council currently has the power to vote for or against having a safe injection site in Kenmore. What is your position on this issue?
My position on this issue is that a safe injection site is neither safe for the addict and it's not safe for the community. So I would not be in favor of Kenmore adopting this policy for our city. I think that there's some other ways to address this public health issue, but I do not believe that creating safe injection sites is one of them.
Suzanne.
I'm also against the safe injection sites and think that we should do other things, such as partnering with folks in the community and the schools and healthcare and provide more education.
Nigel.
I'm not opposed to safe injection sites in general as an idea. I think we really need to get past the war on drugs and attacking people who are addicted and realize that people who are going to use drugs are going to use drugs anyway. And if we can give them a safe place to do it, that's not a bad thing. But I don't think Kenmore is, if you're looking at two places in King County, Kenmore doesn't necessarily make a whole lot of sense as far as population density, drug use, that sort of thing. The idea, though, of passing a resolution saying that we oppose it, I think, is frankly silly, because in order to, the way King County passed the resolution around safe injection sites, you have to pass a positive resolution saying that you welcome them into your community in order for them to place one in your community. Passing a resolution and Kenmore saying that we're opposed to them is frankly just crass political theater, and I'm against that. So while I bulk out of my way to welcome one into the city, I think going out and essentially campaigning against them is harmful and stigmatizing to people who are dealing with addiction.
Thank you. Joe.
I would not approve a safe injection site until I had a lot more information about it, if that information could ever be satisfying. And as an attorney, I could not see how something that could be possibly sponsored by the city or sanctioned by the city and a tragedy occurs with an overdose, there's going to be lawsuits somewhere down the line. It would have to be worked out. I am for enhanced treatment and putting a lot more funding and accelerating and addressing this epidemic onto treatment programs like methadone treatment started very long ago and trying to help people and really accelerate treatment. But until we got way more information than we have now, I wouldn't be able to approve a safe injection site.
Pat.
I say no on the safe injection site. I think that there should be a voucher for treatment or counseling, and we could administer those from the new Evergreen satellite there at the Kenmore City Center if we wanted to do that. We could make information available on transit lines where people could go and get treatment and counseling. I don't believe that injection sites increase the safety for the public, and it only brings it more out into the, where you have the key abuse of these hard narcotics, I think that expands the area in which they happen. So I'm against it.
And Deborah.
Well, full disclosure, I, my job, I work for King County, and I work for the Behavioral Health and Recovery Services Division of the county, which is the division that is proposing the safe injection site. So I'm not completely impartial here. I, what we do know is that safe injection sites kind of bring it out of the shadows and get people into treatment. People are not going to stop using or start using because of the safe injection sites. They're using now. So that said, citing a site in Kenmore doesn't necessarily make sense, and I personally would want a lot more community input if we were, you know, to consider that at all, because I'm not sure that we have the kind of location that it makes sense to do that.
Thank you all. Thank you all for your individual perspectives on those questions. Again, some of those were submitted by the community at large, some of those were developed by the Chamber and used in past forums, so we appreciate your perspectives on that. We're now going to go to the final phase of our evening, and that is you'll have two minutes each for closing comments. You're welcome to make any statement that you wish. You're welcome to expand on a previous answer or a question that maybe you weren't asked. That's all allowable within your two minutes. Please make sure you, again, pay attention to the timekeeper. We are going to start with position two, and Suzanne, you'll go first.
Thanks again, everybody, for coming this evening, and I wanted to give you a little bit more about my background. I started out as an educator and have taught K through nine, also college and at corporations. I was also a small business owner in another city that was going through transition, Anacortes, which was the pathway to the San Juans. And I owned a lodge with cabins, and we saw a need for bicycle travel in the islands, so we started up a bike rental business there, so I know how to make a business successful. From there, I transitioned to working with computers and worked my way up through AT&amp;T, so I'm a director of IT now. I know how to get things done. I know how to collaborate with folks, and I'm a very hard worker, and I look forward to working for all of you on the council, and I love your vote. Thanks.
Joe.
Thanks, everybody, and thanks again to the Greater Kenmore, I mean, Greater Bothell Chamber of Commerce. I hope someday it is, and the Greater Kenmore Chamber of Commerce. I love Kenmore. This is my hometown. I have been honored to represent its North Shore Utility District, its North Shore Fire District, and the Fire District in a case all the way to the State Supreme Court where we did prevail on behalf of the Fire District. I loved being president and volunteering in the North Shore Rotary District, and the Fire District in a case all the way to the State Supreme Court where we did prevail on behalf of the Fire District. I loved being president and volunteering in the North Shore Rotary, where small business owners, local small business owners of all backgrounds just got together and got it done to benefit the public. I want to see us grow smart, I want to see us stay green, preserve our open spaces, our parks, our woods, our shorelines, our environment, and grow with heart to benefit everybody in the community, not those, not just those of us who have enjoyed this unprecedented economic boom. And again, I think getting a public pool back for Kenmore that Kenmore can use will benefit everybody. Thanks very much.
Nigel?
Again, thank you, everybody, for taking your time out here tonight. Representing you on the Kenmore City Council has been one of the greatest honors of my life. I look forward to Monday nights and going down and getting up on the dais and working with my colleagues and making Kenmore a better place to live. It's just incredibly satisfying work. Excuse me. In the last four years, I've delivered on what I ran for, and I want to continue making sure that we're building sidewalks, that we deliver walkways and waterways on time, that we continue to deliver an open and transparent government. I love public service. My day job, I work for state representative, where I serve actually the people of Kenmore. You know, it's a calling and it's something I really enjoy. I'm very proud to be endorsed by Attorney General Bob Ferguson, Lieutenant Governor Cyrus Sabeeb, King County Executive Dow Constantine, County Council Member Rod Dombowski, our entire Olympia delegation, many of my council colleagues, even if we don't see eye to eye on everything, and the Washington Conservation Voters and the Sierra Club. I want to continue bringing that leadership and vision to the Kenmore City Council, and I ask for your vote a second time.
Patrick?
I thank you all for coming this evening. I wish you could have grabbed a person each by an arm and also brought them, because more public appearances and more debates would probably be a good idea. I am the different voice that, if elected, would be serving the people. I'm not endorsed by any Democratic Party people that I know of, and my sole focus is to make sure whatever occurs at the city council, that the public, the voters at Kenmore are notified of it, and that it's not done in secret or a surprising way like the sectioning off of the road by Rite Aid and the entrance into Safeway. That really made a lot of people mad, and there was no notification. So things like that, I'd like to work with citizens and say, you know, this is what's going on, this is why you should be concerned, and whatever the unanimous votes are that occur, I would be very reluctant to just follow along so it could be a unanimous vote. I will state my case, I will try to bring science to issues, which has not been a relevant part of the city council. They seem to miss the boat on what we have here and what the risks and benefits are. And we could talk about 522 demolition, we could talk about continued air pollution in Kenmore, and I think if we could resolve some of those issues, then you'd see something really flourish in Kenmore. And so come up with different ideas and be able to state scientifically, and maybe even legally with Joe on board, why or why not to do something. I think you definitely need some new voices. Thank you.
Carol?
One of the things I didn't mention in my opening comments is that I currently sit on the Kenmore Planning Commission. It's been my honor to be part of that group of collaborators and really researchers and people who are asking the questions of how do we comply with our comprehensive plan? How do we recommend things to our city council to create policy that will allow the city to meet its stated goals? So as a future council member, I would find it quite invigorating to work on the top three things that I think is on the city's agenda, that is that continued safety for the public, it's the economic development of the possibility of Lake Point, and it is allowing the citizens to have a voice and to collaborate on how to enhance our natural assets that are available to us as a community. One of the things that I do as a professional in my training is I am a business consultant. I go into companies and look at what their goals are, analyze what they've done so far, and discover the things that they cannot see from an internal perspective. I think that's a wonderful asset to bring to a team, to be able to discuss things that are hard questions, and to look at things that you might not be able to look at inside the research bubble of a city. So I look forward to being able to serve our community, and I'd ask for your vote.
Thank you, and Deborah?
Thank you again for coming out tonight. It's really an exciting time to be in Kenmore. We're seeing some of the things that were envisioned so long ago, when I sat on the Planning Commission almost 20 years ago, come to fruition at this point. We're seeing the downtown develop, we're seeing our parks and waterfront improvements starting to happen, and we're seeing some uniquely Kenmore businesses thriving, our brewery row that somebody mentioned. But what we do know is that Kenmore is part of the fastest-growing region in the country, and not all of the people that come to this region are going to be able to afford to live in Seattle. They're going to come to Kenmore. So as that development happens, we want to make sure that Kenmore remains a welcoming city, that our development is attractive, and that we, that it has benefits for all of our residents, as I've mentioned before, the retail restaurants and public access that folks are wanting. We also want to make sure that as development occurs, both in downtown and at Lake Point, that we protect our environment and manage traffic. This is a tall order, but these are the challenges that our city is going to face over the next few years. And I, you know that I'm dedicated to working on these issues, you know that I work hard to make positive changes in this community, and I want to continue to work hard on the issues that are of interest to you, the safe streets and neighborhoods, park and waterfront improvements, and development that has benefits for all of our members. I want to continue to work on those issues as your next city council member, because together we can help build Kenmore's future, and I thank you.
Thank you, Deborah. I hope that whoever makes it to the council, a couple of reminders. One, that the Greater Bothell Chamber of Commerce, which in 2018 will become the Bothell Kenmore Chamber of Commerce, is here to serve the interests of Kenmore businesses, to connect business with community, and we are here as a partner for you. I also hope you'll remember that Cascadia is Kenmore's community college, and that we're here to serve that population. And then, of course, we also have the resource of Uta-Bothell down the road as well, and those are willing partners in your quest to make Kenmore a better place to live. I want to thank the Chamber of Commerce for hosting tonight. I would hope the audience could help me thank the candidates for expressing their viewpoints today. Appreciate that very much. And I want to thank those of you in the audience for coming out tonight. Thanks very much for being here. Have a good night.